Good work for us, that shouldn't take very long because there's some information that needs to go to people there. We have continued plans which is Pillsbury Realty Development. We'll have a very short presentation from Ari Pollak I think will help get us to where we are right now. He'll probably summarize things, tie things together. I've got two letters to read into the record and Tom has a response to one of the letters. And then we'll do the public, you know, the public can ask their questions or whatever and what we can answer, so. And then we'll continue with new plans for those who want to stay after that. So I have a few administrative things to do here. I'll appoint Lisa to vote for Mary and Al to vote for Chris and that gives us a total of eight voting members. Approval minutes June 5th, June 12th, and June 26th, 2013. But the easiest to take is to take those all together.
All together or separate?
Well separately in case someone was absent, yes. Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the June 5th Planning Board meeting.
Okay, motion by Lynn, second by John. Let's see, any discussion, signal discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Abstentions, anyone who was absent. Chair was affirmative and the minutes of June 5th, 2013 are approved. June 12th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Planning Board meeting minutes from June 12th.
Motion by Lynn, second by John. Any discussions, seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes of June 12th, 2013 as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Abstentions?
One abstention.
And Lynn abstains as he was absent. Chair was affirmative and the minutes of June 12th are approved and June 26th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Planning Board meeting minutes from June 26th, 2013.
Okay, motion by Lynn, second by John for June 26th, 2013, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Abstentions. Al, Lisa, and Laura, we're not present. Chair was affirmative and the minutes of June 26th, 2013 are approved. We have one extension request, this is Shops at Londonderry Site Plan, 71 Perkins Road and 171 Rockingham Road, tax map 15, lots 51 and 59. And this I know was a specific request, I think there's a letter to...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there's a letter in your portfolio from Michael D. Giuseppe. He is the applicant for the Shops at Londonderry. There's also a letter on behalf of the owner of the property supporting the request. They've requested an extension for one year, an additional 12 months, so that would be to July 10th of 2014.
The questions, if there isn't, I'll take a motion to grant the extension to July 10th, 2014.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the extension request for the Shops at Londonderry Site Plan, one year until the July 12th.
10.
July 10th, 2014 Planning Board meeting.
Okay, motion by Lynn, second by John for the extension, any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Abstentions? Chair was affirmative and the Shops at Londonderry Site Plan has been extended to July 10th, 2014. One regional impact determination?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This evening we have the subdivision plan for Thomas J. and Christina L. Wolfinger, map 12, lot 106. They are requesting a two-lot subdivision. Staff recommends that the project is not a development of regional impact as it does not meet any of the criteria as suggested by Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
Okay, I'll take a motion that the Wolfinger subdivision is out of regional impact.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we consider the Wolfingers subdivision, map 12, lot 106, as a project not of regional impact.
Motion by Lynn, second by John, any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Abstentions? Chair was affirmative and the Wolfinger subdivision, tax map 12, lot 106, is not of regional impact. Discussions with town staff, I'll take that at the end of the meeting and of the business. And we'll move to continued plans, this is Pillsbury Realty Development LLC, tax map 10, lots 15, 23, 29C-2A, 29C-2B, 41, 41-1, 41-2, 42, 45, 46, 47, 48, 50, 52, 54-1, 57, 58, 59, and 62. This is a public hearing for formal review of the Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development, as known as PUD, master plan. And this is continued from the public hearing of June 26th, 2013. That was continued to July 10th, 2013. And Ari, you have a brief presentation. I think that will help give us like an executive summary of where we're headed to.
Yes, thanks. I'm Ari Pollak of Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell here this evening for the Woodmont applicants. To my right is Emily Eines from the Cecil Group. She has actually the short executive summary presentation to provide, but I'll introduce her topic as well as some scheduling issues. Also with us tonight, of course, is Mike Kettenbach representing the ownership group. The two items for consideration this evening are an extension of the review clock which runs to today and we did make a filing requesting an extension, and a short presentation on the format and structure of what is quickly taking shape as our master plan document. This is the document that essentially is the culmination of both the application and the briefing materials that we've been providing on a month-to-month basis, trying to put it all together into a user-friendly document that can guide development proposals as the PUD moves into the development phase. We certainly want to be respectful of other applicants. We know you only have one meeting programmed through July and so we've set this up really as an update, an executive summary meeting. As to the review clock, we filed a letter earlier today asking for an extension of the clock until Friday, August 16th. That would get us past your second meeting in August scheduled for August 14th and it's our request that not only do you entertain a motion to extend the review clock, but also when our summary is finished this evening, that you continue the matter until that second meeting in August, August 14th. In terms of where we're headed between now and then, we have ongoing discussions at a peer review and staff level as to the contents of this evolving master plan document. We're going to continue and hopefully conclude those discussions and put at least a working version of the document in your hands on or before your meeting on August 7th. Most convenient to distribute it at the meeting, so most likely we'll make a delivery that can just be distributed while you're here that night. We won't have a presentation that evening, will be continued to the 14th. On the 14th, it's our hope to not only present materials relating to the development agreement, but at least discuss what we've put into your hands the week before and to start to get some feedback leading up to one additional meeting beyond that. We're hopeful that you'll entertain a request for a special meeting on August 28th, which would be the fourth Friday of August. It's the week, it's the work week prior to Labor Day weekend. I know you have a number of members who aren't here tonight and maybe it's not possible to determine who's available and who isn't, but that's at least would be our request of where we would go from the 14th, beyond the 14th rather. So that's sort of our roadmap of where, not only where we think we are, but where we think we're headed. And I'm happy to take any questions on that or to ask Emily to provide her presentation.
Okay, I guess we'll think, well, I know the extension we have to do to the 16th and then the meeting of the 14th is a given, I think the board will think about it during the presentation of the meeting of the 28th.
Can I ask a question? What would be the next date that we could meet if the 28th wasn't available to the majority of the members?
Probably wouldn't be until the first, when is the, in September?
September 4th.
September 4th.
September 4th I believe is your first meeting of September, that's the week of Labor Day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I'll have a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you don't mind, I'm going to stand so I can work the presentation from over here. My role, as Ari said, is to give you a brief introduction to the structure of the final document that you will receive in August. So as you can see from this slide, the final document will have four sections. Sections one and four are general planning context, baseline information. It's basically what somebody looking at this plan for the first time, five, 10, 20 years from now, is going to need to see. In the case of section one, we're looking at the planning context, the planning process, and general information. Yeah, this, ah, here we go. So section one is broken down into purpose of the planning of this particular plan. It includes the context of the whole planning process, the intent of the plan. Under information plans, we include both early conceptual plans that were developed throughout this entire process and the current information plan as it stands now, not only as the overview which you've seen before, but broken down sub-area by sub-area in detail. The information plan, of course, is one option for how something could be developed under the rules and regulations in this master plan. Section one also gives basic information on ownership and how the rest of the documents are organized. It is non-regulatory. Section four, which provides additional information, is a combination of contextual information such as the updated abutters list that would give somebody historically an idea of what was happening around the property, and the forms that we're going to be using to track some of what's going on in the master plan over the years. So that's contextual information, however, it contains three documents which you've already seen before, the Master Plan Traffic Impact Assessment, the Infrastructure Memorandum, and the Master Fiscal Impact Analysis. These documents are ones that are referred to within Sections two and three, which are the regulatory portions of the document. So Sections two and three, as I've said, they're the regulatory ones, they're the ones that the developer will use to prepare a submittal at either the PUD subdivision level or the PUD site plan level. They're the ones that you, the Planning Board, and the town staff, and the public will use to evaluate any application that comes before you. Section three really has to do with mitigation thresholds. It will refer to the development agreement, which is still in the process of being created, and it will refer to Sections 4.2 and 4.3, the Master Plan Traffic Impact Assessment and the Infrastructure Memorandum that you've seen before. And you can see that Section three covers transportation, utilities, and at the moment chloride management. Section 2.0 is really the heart of the document. This is where the regulations and standards reside. It covers land use, it covers the PUD subdivision, and it covers the PUD site plan. The introductory portion contains the basic overall PUD information, the stuff that applies to the PUD as a whole. So it includes the planning and design principles that inform the rest of the document. It includes the waivers that the applicant is asking for you to consider. It includes PUD definitions, and those are terms that are either not found in the Londonderry zoning ordinance or that are different from the Londonderry zoning ordinance. Section 2.2 is the land use regulations. It includes the land use plan, which is required by the Londonderry zoning ordinance, and gives a general idea of the basic location of streets and open space and other elements. It includes the allowable uses by sub-area and the allowable densities maximum by sub-area and the conserved green space and shared open space minimums by sub-area. Land use regulations also cover the regulations that apply to each sub-area. And there are three sheets for that that you will see going forward. The first one has the intent of that particular sub-area, the allowable types, which we'll talk about in a minute, but are the street types, the block types, the open space types, and the building and lot types that are allowable in that sub-area. It has a land use plan for the particular sub-area, again giving you more detailed information about the general approximate locations of streets and open space and developable areas. And then it gives the principles and standards for composing that sub-area, so the guidelines the developer would use for each of those sub-areas. Section 2.3 is the PUD subdivision regulations and standards, and that covers those elements that would make up a subdivision submittal. So you have blocks, streets, and open space that would be assembled together to create the subdivision. You also have other regulations for PUD subdivision signage, lighting, utilities, all the elements that would come together to form a subdivision submittal. And again, the idea is that this is what the developer would use, it's what you would use to evaluate the submission and what town staff would evaluate, and obviously the public. So everybody is starting from understanding how these are put together. Section 2.4 does the same thing, but this time it's for site plan. So at the site plan level, you're looking at buildings, lots, architectural guidelines, again, site plan, landscaping, signage, stormwater, all of the elements that go into a site plan submittal. And then the final two parts of Section two are administrative parts. Section 2.5 discusses how the master plan would be administered, how and under what circumstances it might be changed. And Section 2.6 describes the forms that we would use to track the development and how we would track the maximum for development and the minimum for open space, shared open space and conserved green space, and the reporting requirements for the town. So we would report on a project-by-project basis and we would also report on an annual Next steps, Ari's already described some of them, but basically our team will continue to work with staff and with your peer review consultants to review comments and continue with this particular document. We will deliver it to you and then review this with you at the August meeting. And I'd be happy to take any questions and provide any answers on the structure.
Okay, what we'll do is the, we'll go to the board first. We've got the letters to read in the public record and then we'll go to the public.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What you saw here is just snippets of what we're working on in a draft fashion and our intention tonight is to provide you with some 10,000-foot familiarity with what's coming at you so that when we drop this book, it's not, one, terrifying, and, two, just simply too onerous to get through. We don't expect everyone to memorize every word for the 14th, we don't expect to drill down to every minutia detail, but our hope tonight is to sort of break the ice in terms of what we're, what we've been cultivating over these months to try and make you more familiar with what's coming your way.
Thank you. One thing I do want to add is that I know at our last meeting, we had an extensive session on the fiscal impacts on the town of Londonderry. And we looked at the whole 20-year period, but we had a lot of questions on the impacts of, you know, the first several years along the way. Those are being dealt with in the development agreement, and the development agreement is currently a work in progress.
Yes, thank you for updating that.
And that's where that is being handled, probably most appropriately. Otherwise, I think we're all over the place, you know, trying to, trying to come up with numbers with something that there was nothing, nothing firm about it at all, but we'll look at this as a, by stages. I'll start, if you have any questions, Rick, go to the board.
No, I'm all set.
You're all set.
I'm set.
Yeah, just one quick question. So the master plan that we're going to receive is a complete rewrite of what we received a while ago? I mean, the sections have changed, the numbering has changed, that type of thing, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't call it a rewrite as much as it's an evolution of a lot of those ideas. In other words...
Rewrite might be the wrong word. I'm just saying Section 2.2 from the original master plan won't map to Section 2.2 of the new one.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm all set.
Okay, Lisa?
I'm set.
Okay. I've got a letter from Walter Merrill in Stock, 39 Gordon Drive, and the letter reads, "Londonderry Planning Board Members and Londonderry Town Council Members. Londonderry taxpayers should not be put in a position of financially supporting Woodmont Commons or any other project in town. If the existing roads need to be upgraded or the fire department needs a new fire truck, et cetera, because of Woodmont Commons or any other development, the developer of these projects should be responsible for the cost of these items, not the Londonderry taxpayer. It is good that the Woodmont Commons project should be tax-positive in 20 years, but the problem is getting to this 20-year build-out. It is not the responsibility of the Londonderry taxpayer to subsidize this project or any other project, it is up to the developer of these projects. The Londonderry taxpayer should be given a binding vote to decide if they want this project or not, as proposed by the Woodmont Commons developer before the Londonderry Planning Board votes on a project. Also, the cost increase because of Woodmont Commons from Penitent Water, Public Service of New Hampshire, Comcast, Verizon, and the Londonderry sanitary sewer should not be passed on to the existing customers. It should be paid by the developer of Woodmont Commons and the new customer of these services. Finally, the PUD should be repealed before any other developer tries to develop another tract of land in Londonderry with a mega-development. Londonderry Planning Board, please read this entire email into the minutes of the July 10th, 2013 meeting during the discussion of Woodmont Commons." And I read everything there is, other than the email list of the Planning Board members. And the other letter is from James and Carol Tomaswick, 24 Devonshire Lane, and that's in Londonderry. And this letter reads, "Londonderry Planning Board Members and Londonderry Town Council Members. Our family moved to Londonderry 43 years ago. At the time, there were no stoplights on Route 102 between Hudson and Dairy. The area was open and green and was to us an ideal place to raise a family. That's why we moved here. Things change, some call it progress. We live on Devonshire Lane, a block away from the proposed Woodmont Commons. Yes, we are not technically abutters, but we will be adversely and directly affected. When Home Depot tried to bring in its big box store off Route 102, we and our neighbors petitioned the town to close off Devonshire Lane through traffic because it had become a cut-through for speeders trying to skip the lights at Gilchrist Road and Route 102. Home Depot stepped up and purchased the land at the end of Devonshire so that the town could block the street from potential beverage traffic. We believe Home Depot did this because they wanted to be good neighbors and the town supported its citizens. As far as we've seen, Woodmont Commons has not offered any single thing in an attempt to be a good future, future neighbors. Why should they spend money or give up land if they don't have to? Why should they care if they're good neighbors or not? And take, our take is that they will do nothing that costs money unless they're made to do so. Neighbors be damned. And to our knowledge, the town has yet to do anything to support its long-time taxpayers who voice concern after concern about the negative impact of the project. Because of our proximity to the Market Basket Plaza, we've endured the blasting that caused our well water to go black, our house to settle below drainage, our drainage pipe. We incurred significant plumbing and drainage costs because of their development, and neither the town nor the developer came forward with assistance. Is this going to happen again the next 30, for the next 20 years? That's a question. It is our hope that the town will do something other than smile and bob their heads when the Woodmont Commons representatives come before the Planning Board. We're hopeful and not convinced that you will protect the long-term citizens and taxpayers against the potential damage and disruption this project will cause. We concur with Jack Falvey that 19-acre Apple Way Park on Gilchrist Road be preserved as a condition of the town acceptance of the Woodmont master plan. We also ask that the town require a fund to be made available to offset the damage that will occur to those taxpayers, like us, not just immediate abutters who are negatively affected by this development." And I make sure I get everything written here. Londonderry Planning Board, please read this entire email into the minutes of the July 10th, 2013 meeting during the discussion on Woodmont Commons. And we also got these through the @Al, Jack Falvey's email chain. And I know Tom Freida had responded to the people on Devonshire Lane. That was probably quite appropriate.
Thanks. Dear Mr. Tomaswick, thank you for your email. Before responding to your concerns about the duration of the construction and its effect on you and your family, let me first address your request concerning the Apple Way Park. Mr. Falvey has suggested Woodmont's PUD approval by the Planning Board must be conditioned on Woodmont establishing a 19-acre park, which you have echoed in your email. The town's attorney has looked into this and has specifically advised that conditioning Planning Board approval on Woodmont's providing this park is illegal. Below is an excerpt from a press release on the issue. More than 35 years ago, the New Hampshire Supreme Court declared unconstitutional, declared it unconstitutional for municipalities to condition approval of a land use plan on the taking of part of a developer's land or requiring an improvement that is not necessitated by the land use plan, citing the case of Robbins Auto Parts Inc. versus City of Laconia. The court explained its decision as follows. "The right of a citizen not to have his property taken from him for public use without just compensation is a fundamental right, the roots of which reach back to Magna Carta. City officials have no legitimate interest in attempting to extort from a citizen, surrender of his right as a price for site plan approval, nor can such a condition be supported on the so-called police power. The right to just compensation is a constitutional restriction on the police power and is therefore superior to it." The next year, the New Hampshire Supreme Court held that the rule that announced in Robbins applies equally when the Planning Board asks not to develop or improve a parcel land, but that he leave it unimproved, citing the case of Patent 2 versus Town of Merida. "I believe this information was conveyed to Mr. Falvey a few weeks ago as well as distributed to the newspapers and put online on the town's website. I'm having it placed back on the town's website as it was recently taken down." And now to your other concerns. First, I disagree with you that the Planning Board members, of which I am one, are simply sitting there smiling and bobbing our heads at the Woodmont representatives. The Woodmont representatives are submitting their application. Planning Board members, including me, are asking questions to follow up on the presentations. Not one decision has, as have yet, been made or voted on. Additionally, board members have listened to any citizens who show up and have questions as well as had emails from citizens read into the record. Second, the fact remains that as members of the Planning Board, all applicants are entitled to a fair hearing to present their plans to the board, including the Woodmont applicants. My concerns have been and will continue to be that this project is fiscally tax-positive from the beginning and not just 20 years from now, and that any increased traffic be mitigated at the developer's and not the taxpayer's expense. Third, as for more specific control over the development, in my experience, a time for that kind of control over development is best obtained when the developer presents specific building plans for specific lots and not at this level, which according to the PUD ordinance may be amended at any time. I'm not sure I've addressed all of your concerns, but please feel free to contact me with any other questions I may have missed. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I'll go to the public for any questions, comments, or concerns. And there's a microphone right up here on your right, and just name and address, please. John.
John Wilson, Tranquil Drive, Londonderry. I have a couple, I guess, requests, okay? First one is, and maybe you're going to do this anyhow, but as this agreement, developers' agreement is put together, would you, as that drafts evolved, can you get that on the website so it can, so it can be, the public can study that as we go along?
It's a work in progress now.
I know, well, it's all right. I just like to see how the work and process evolves. It shouldn't be, I can't reason why it shouldn't be a public document.
It will eventually be a public document anyway, once, once it's complete and before we're taking any action on it, so. So there will be time for input.
Yeah, but you're going to have, you're going to have maybe months to deal with it. And once it comes out, I'm going to have, or the rest of the town, people in town are going to have, how long? A week maybe? I mean, there's no reason why that document cannot be made public as far as I can see as it goes along.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do anyway.
The other thing is, I think another document that's involved in this whole project is, I don't know how far we got to go back, but that basic agreement that was struck 10 years ago, or maybe 15 years ago, on the commits the town to put up some money associated foray? Wasn't that with Boston North, I think was the company involved in that, which is, you know, part of this, I guess. I'd like to, I'd like to be able, because I think that document at some point in time is going to have some relevance to this whole thing. Could you get that document and it's out on the website so that can be reviewed?
Yes, that can be done.
Okay. The other thing is, is it possible, and maybe it exists, to try to put at least a tentative plan that says, here's where we are today, and you don't even have to put dates on it necessarily, but a path by what's going to happen, what are the key things in terms of meetings and discussions and how we're going to make decisions, you know, how these involve, evolve into how we're going to make decisions? Because this, I don't understand the process. And it seems like we ought to work... Because this, I don't understand the process, and it seems like we ought to work and get the process hammered down right from here to the end, exactly how we're going to approach this. So then you can start thinking about, you know, is, you know, is this the right process? Okay? And it seems like we, it's time to create that document if it doesn't exist. It's a roadmap, how we're, we're here, there's a lot of rough road between now and the end. I think a roadmap would be good.
Yeah, we'll try what we can, because we know we're going to be meeting on the 14th about it, and then a possible meeting on the 28th, so far. That's all we know right now.
And I guess the other thing is, when you have this on the August 14th, which is when you're going to have this, I guess, this master plan meeting, can you get that out on the website before the, before, can be, can have time to look at it before the meeting?
Because we'll have information coming to us on the 7th, which is...
Okay, so you get it out a day or two after that?
Right. That's what we've done when we've had materials presented to us over the last, at least seven, eight months with this. So once we get them, and then they're up on the website, they're also available for the public.
One other thing, which this may sound far-fetched, but one of the main issues that I see relative to how this is going to impact town, the town, I think a lot of that centers around how it's going to impact Gilchrist Road, and specifically that neighborhood. Now, this may sound far-fetched, but this is a very large development, and a lot of, it's going to cost a lot of money in the end. Why not just shift that retention pond virtually west, almost to the boundary, and then let that pond in its entirety be the buffer between that neighborhood and the rest of development? You shouldn't lose any land, you just build yourself a buffer that I don't think too many people could object to, because that would mean you're going to have thousands of, probably about 1,000 yards worth of clearance or on there, and, you know, it's some excavation. Just a thought.
Yeah, we'll probably have more discussions on the pond, anyone, if anything, somewhere were raised. We'll see if, how closely they listen to us once we get the final document. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll bring it back to the board. We need a motion to extend the 65-day time period to the 16th of August, and we need a motion to continue this to the 14th of August, and then we need to decide if we want to meet on the 28th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the 65-day clock through August 16th, Friday.
Okay, motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion by the board? Sign on. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. Anyone abstaining? Chair was affirmative, and this, the 65-day window has been extended to the 16th of August.
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
Yes.
If you're going to meet on the 28th, too, why don't you just extend the 65-day clock through the 28th?
Um...
Just a question, sorry.
It is a question, but I think we'll leave it, let things progress. We see, I think what's going to happen, I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions on the 14th, which probably would require an extension, but this is the kind of way we've been doing it. It's very systematic, so, not always logical, but systematic, so.
That was funny.
As many things are not logical, so we have to deal with on that.
Thank you, sir.
The second motion?
And the second motion is to continue this public hearing to the 14th of August.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion, the second, to continue this public hearing to the 14th of August at 7:00 PM right here. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. Abstentees, chair was affirmative, and as public hearing has been extended to the 16th of August at 7:00 PM right here. And would have any, would feel like meeting on the 28th if needed? I guess I'm going to put it, maybe do.
Sure.
Okay, so, yeah, I think we're all set.
That's very much appreciated, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
You don't need to call.
No, no. We're taped, we have a consensus, so, that's it.
Yeah, I heard the motion to continue, so I'm about to leave.
Yes.
Leave the table, leave the table at least, unless anyone objects.
Unless you want to stay, we got five, five new plans to hear, so.
I might stick around for some of that.
Mr. Chairman, did we actually do a vote? Did we do a vote?
Actually vote on the extension? I know John asked you, could we, could we move to 28th? I don't, I also don't remember actually voting on the extension.
Okay.
Oh, no, he did a point of order, which I thought we already voted.
It was moved, they voted on it.
It was moved and seconded, I just don't remember actually voting on it.
Well, we can vote again if we want.
Yeah, want to vote again?
Okay, we'll vote again. All those in favor of the...
Extending.
Yes, extending the hearing to the 14th of August.
16. That's the one. Extending the time clock to 16th was the one I had.
We did the 16th, then we did the vote.
Yeah, we did, yeah. So this is, this is the extension of the public hearing to the 14th of August, I mean, 14th of August, pardon me. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. Abstentees, chair was affirmative, and as public hearing has been extended to the 16th